Yeah, one civic minded person willing to show up today.
All right, everybody, I'm gonna call to order our King City City Council work session, 12:03 PM. No action will be taken during this work session. City of King City will be meeting to hold general discussion around, oh hi Vince, attorney and city manager. So, let's go ahead and do roll call.
Council Braverman?
Here.
Council Tysa?
Here.
Council Arndy?
Here. Here.
Uh, I have two vacant seats. For yours.
You didn't call me.
Oh.
Yeah.
Kind of embarrassing.
There. I'm here too. Um, we will open up, uh, open forum now.
Hey, aren't we supposed to say that we have a quorum and all that? Did we learn that this week?
I don't think we, I mean, I don't think we have.
Okay, we don't have to.
Okay. All right. Forum, we're gonna open forum, open up, open forum. Ronnie, do we have anybody online?
Uh, I have Randy Olson, but I don't know if he wants to talk.
Okay. Uh, Randy, we see you are online. If you would like to enter in a public comment here, go ahead and raise your hand on Zoom.
Hi Randy.
Okay. Great, Randy, the floor is yours. I will start your timer. We've got three minutes. When you start talking.
I think he's on mute.
You are on mute, Randy.
Oh, good morning, City Council. I did not have any comments to make at this time.
Oh, okay, well glad you're here. Thanks for, thanks for being here. Okay, no one else?
No one else.
Okay. Um, we will go ahead and close, um, our open forums, uh, portion of the meeting and get to item number four, discussion on city attorney services. Um, we would like staff and community input. Um, we're gonna talk about interim appointment options and then consider, um, starting the RFP process. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start discussing attorney needs. We, we opened up last time with what we had, a long list of attorney needs. Hopefully, we've had time to think about, like narrowing that down and, um, what our immediate and long-term needs are. So, um, I'll go ahead and open up our discussion for whoever would like to begin.
So what was our list of needs? Does anybody have a list of that?
I didn't bring it with me today.
I had it in my head. Ronnie, you helped us with it instead of Ashley. Remember she gave us that long list?
Yeah.
Do you have that transcribed handily?
Yeah, uh, I have to go.
Fine, 'cause I, I didn't bring the same, uh, mental notebook with myself. I remember half of what she said, but not the whole list.
So, in the meantime, um, any discussion points between now and then that we've thought about? I have my own, but I'll let you guys start. Yes, go for it.
Um, thank you for recognizing me, Mayor Mayor.
I think in a work session, we can kind of, you know.
I'm trying to track my new rules.
Thank you.
Somebody paid attention, didn't they?
I did.
Right.
Um, I watched it on Zoom, as you know, after I left. I was working and listening. Um, so my thoughts are this, I know we need a, a, a land use attorney for sure, but I think we also need a, a good parliamentarian. I really was impressed with Jurassic's parliamentarian, and I felt like having somebody like that as an attorney, if we're not gonna hire a separate person to ask as our parliamentarian, it would be nice to have somebody who knows the rules well.
Yeah. Agreed.
I agree too. I, I would, I would kinda think and maybe hope that that would be, that would just come along with the attorney.
I, I feel like what I understood from what Ashley was telling us is that most attorneys do have that baseline, um, whatever the word I'm looking for, um, knowledge about municipal parliamentarian issues, and then they specialize more into something else. So it would be my hope to, um, I think that land use is a really big and, um, a really big need right now and kind of an urgent one with how we have wanted to move forward with looking at the TSP and we need somebody with Luba experience to help guide us through that. Um, that's my, my thoughts. Did you have, I feel like you had something you wanna add?
Yes, and I, I totally concur that the land use, the land use specialist is very important. I understand Ronnie is taking, um, parliamentary and, parliamentary and.
Training.
Uh-huh.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, work right now.
Yep.
As a parliamentarian.
Yeah.
Obviously is not to the degree of the attorney, but I think that's a, going to be a real asset for all of us moving forward to have somebody in-house who has become.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
She's already quite knowledgeable too about parliamentarian procedure. Sure our noses are clanged.
Yeah, and I think it's good that we continue to keep up with our training too.
Yeah.
As, as we have found, that just because somebody is a subject matter expert doesn't always make them correct in the interpretation of our charter and our municipal code. I think it's incumbent upon City Council to also study our charter, understand it, understand our municipal code, and stop being, you know, I'm not calling anybody lazy, but I'm just saying for myself, I don't wanna be lazy. I wanna make sure that I understand what our code says and what our charter says too.
Absolutely. Um, I really appreciated that in the training on Tuesday, she also had already asked Ann, I forget her last name, if she would help us in reviewing our municipal and charter and finding those places where there's ambiguity or conflicts or, um, and so it's great that she's already kind of agreed to do that, and that's gonna be another piece where, um, you know, ideal, yeah, like ideally we would, in my, well, I guess in my opinion, ideally we would have her come help us in a work session, identify all these places where we could be shoring up our charter and our code, and then we would have an attorney be able to actually help us implement those changes properly.
Was that Tisha? That was, that was.
Thank you. No, yeah, she said she had spoken with Ann that wrote the book that we were given, yeah.
I remember I asked her who we could call to help us. I think really, and I know I've mentioned this before, but I think it's part of this discussion, I feel like in this work session, um, at some work session, we need to come to a consensus that we need to fix the ambiguities and the conflicts between the charter and the municipal code. That was also pointed out by the Jurassic people.
Yep.
I think that has caused a lot of consternation as well because one person is saying, let's follow this, and another person is saying, let's follow that, and the ambiguity is confusing, and I don't think we're in agreement. And I think it's sad that we're having these arguments over something that can be remedied pretty easily if we just come together and figure out where those ambiguities really are and where those conflicts are.
Yeah.
And to down, so there's no conflict.
Yeah, yeah. There needs to be more clarity because, yeah, anytime there's ambiguity, there's gonna be different interpretations of, of what it means. So there's definitely places where it needs to be more clear, so that is also, um, a very pressing issue.
Since this is a work session, um, and I know Ronnie's probably already on this, I would strongly suggest to everyone in this discussion that we first, our first step before we hire anyone, um, is to get our code and our charter in alignment. The reason I say that is it's nice that we're gonna be hiring new people to come in and help us, but the problem, the underlying problem of the conflicts are gonna persist if we don't get those fixed first, because anyone that comes in is gonna fall into the, they're gonna be looking at the charter and the municipal code trying to guide the council, and they're gonna be confused.
Are you talking about a city attorney or are you talking about a city manager?
I think that, well, right now, we're just talking about.
Attorney.
Attorney.
I know, but just, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Yeah.
Fixed up, because I think bringing somebody in and then knowing that we already have these problems.
Yeah.
Cause more problems.
We will, yes.
That, I, I would imagine that could extend, uh, months and months and months. It's so easy to get into the weeds on the city charter and municipal code, that, that it would be, it'd be delaying everything. It may in fact be better if we did bring our attorney on and our city manager on and have them help us also at the same time with city charter.
Well, I can see both sides, but I think, I think that it shouldn't take very long. We already know, we already got a, a good glimpse at this week's training, where some of the areas are, and there are not that many thankfully. So I don't see that's gonna take months and months. I mean, I could sit down tonight and actually write out some things, and I think we could come to an agreement and then get it.
I wanna give, um, Council Diddy a, a chance to weigh in.
Oh, I didn't know.
Max has something he wants to say. So we'll start with, um, Council Diddy, did you wanna weigh in here on some thoughts?
No.
Okay, next.
I would just advise, I, I agree with Council Carehart, because the city has already established a charter review committee, which is in the middle of reviewing the charter, but we're doing it without the city attorney ever present. And if we're going to be taking a look at the lining of the charter and the code, I think of having a city attorney present while we're reconfiguring the charter and having that background foundational knowledge to then go into the code and make the code match the charter after having had his hand or his or her handwriting change the charter itself, will really help coalesce as opposed to coming in with the charter up in the air. And any kind of code amendment, even if it's already been written, say, we already know exactly what we wanna do with the code, take at least two months to codify, um, and that's not counting the amount of time that it'll take to actually amend the code. So you're looking at six months to a year, because the charter review committee has a deadline of December, January, which is probably going to be extended, um, just to finalize the new charter. So I would just advise that you probably wanna bring on the city attorney. First, in your hiring process, you can explain that the city is going through a charter review, going through code amendments, and then they can go into the job knowing that that's gonna be part of their primary responsibilities from this.
I would like to, um, I, I think that's a really good point. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just, to say, I concur with Max and with Steve that having an expert on, that answers to us in a sense, that, that can also help keep things moving forward and things, that attorney needs to be somebody who is very conversant in, in municipal codes and charters.
Hold on, hold on, Council Braverman.
You know, that a land use attorney is very important, but I think somebody, and maybe we, as Ashley had said, can have more than an attorney. You can hire a firm that has experts in various areas, or you can hire experts from different attorney firms, but, but to help keep us, um, on the straight and narrow and out of chaos, I think some, probably the most important attorney is going to be the one that has a lot of municipal background.
So I would, yeah, hold on one second. I would just like to reiterate, like, I do appreciate that viewpoint of, um, we want to make sure that what we're doing along the way is rooted in what we can legally do and, and have somebody help us through that. I think moving forward, since we do have obviously the, the power to hire who we want, we just need to make it clear what our goals and what our intentions are with what we're doing. Let them know that we are updating our charter, our municipal code. We're trying to make the language more clear, less ambiguous, no conflicts, um, making sure that we are changing language in the charter that, you know, gives too much power. Um, there needs to be more checks and balances. So I think that as long as we are upfront with what our goals are and what our needs are and what we need that attorney to help us with, and not just like fully look at the charter and guide us on that, like understanding like, yes, this is our ruling documents, but we are updating them to fit King City better. Um, but we, like, I, I just keep coming down to the fact that, like, we need a lawyer to help us do that.
Adam Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, he is correct, but we, I also asked Ed to come for this Friday, tomorrow, to help us with that.
Is that the, is there a charter meeting tomorrow?
Yes, there is one. Um, they wanted to cancel it until further notice, until we had a city manager and an attorney, but I don't think we need to do that. I think we just need a, a, um, an attorney there to make sure that we're not, when we're stepping around, like, certain words.
I guess my concern with like the, I, I appreciate what the charter review committee is doing, looking at the charter and updating that. My concern is that we're not also looking at the municipal code.
Yeah.
Conflicts between the two.
You have to do, you have to do one and then the other. And the reason why is because the charter goes out to vote. Okay? And you can't change the code until you change.
No, I understand that, but I think looking at them at the same time and saying, here's where there's very.
Clearly, Max and I, we have an entire list of things that we.
Can we, can we, can you share that with us? Like what you guys already have identified and looked at? That'd be great. Okay, Council Braverman.
Um, thank you for recognizing me. Guys, I have a lot of concerns. First concern is that the charter committee has been operating without an attorney, without the City Council's guidelines, um, and I'm concerned because Ed is not gonna be our permanent attorney. I would vote to postpone the charter committee. What I'm hearing from everyone is that we need an attorney first. Let's get that going. Let's make sure that the charter committee has some real guideposts and some guidelines on what the City Council wants to see and the community wants to see in the charter and the municipal code. In my opinion, we've already been shown that there are several areas of concern and ambiguity where they're in conflict. I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to be able to say, we have these two areas that are in conflict and we need to make them. That has to be done first.
Yeah.
It absolutely has to be done first.
I think what I'm hearing is we have to, we need to identify the spots, but the charter would have to be changed.
Charter.
Maybe to align with the.
And my understanding is, and I, I could be wrong, but from what I've heard a little bit from Ronnie and a little bit from you and a little bit from our city manager, that the charter committee was trying to set up a situation where the city council members are gonna be paid. I disagree with that. I don't wanna be paid. I don't think city council members should be paid.
I think we don't need to get too much into.
I'm, I'm, I know, but I'm, but I'm using this as an illustration. I'm only using this as an illustration as to how, we have a new city council, we have new people coming on, we have new direction coming from the city council. It is high time that the city council manage, they manage.
We, no, we, we.
Oh, it's a, because.
It is, it has been discussed previously. So we, I fully understand where you're coming from and your concerns, and I, and I share them. That's why I think we need to make sure that, okay, we need to make sure that we're sharing those needs with whoever it is that we're hiring, because they are important.
I think one point, uh, to you, Council Braverman.
Yeah.
The reason that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ronnie, the reason that the charter review committee does not have a single council member on it or statute is because, and the fact that it's an independent body, it meant that it's supposed to be separate from the city council, because the charter transcends city councils. So the last charter has been 20 years, and how many city councils have it? Twenty years?
Yeah.
Five, a little more than that, probably about 10.
Yeah.
So I think the city council does not have the standing to direct the charter review committee, because it is an independent body that is not supposed to take direction from the city council.
I don't see anything written that says that, one. Number two, I'm concerned with the makeup of the charter committee. It seems to be predominantly kind of one section of people.
I wanna say, I just, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I do wanna say that we are, you know, we, we have a couple other things we need to get to, and we're getting a little bit into the weeds of the charter committee, which isn't the point of this conversation, which is our city attorney services. We've identified some needs, Luba, municipal code. Um, we have a list of recommended firms from Ashley. We have a special session next week. I would like to, in the next week, look at the recommended firms that Ashley gave us, see which ones might fit the best, and potentially, um, bring it to maybe like a direct appointment next week where we can get somebody on board to help us with these things that are time consuming. And so I think the sooner we can start that process and have somebody on board is good, is good. Yes.
Have you seen Ashley's list? Have, has that been shared with all of us?
I wrote it down just based off of what she said in the last meeting. So I can resend that out if you don't have it.
I do not have it written down.
I'd have to look back through my notes from the last session, and it's, we, we have it. And so I'll send out who she, I think there were four, four firms that she had recommended. So, um, between now and next week, let's just do more homework on those firms with this in mind, where Luba's very important, and then, um, the municipal charter changes, we need somebody on board to help guide that. Um, and then in those conversations, yeah, with whoever we decide we wanna go with, that they know that what are our needs and what are.
Miller Nash was one of the four firms she mentioned.
Yeah, there were, yeah. I have them written down. I don't, I didn't bring that notebook with me today, but I can send that to Ronnie to distribute to everyone.
You said there were four firms?
I wanna say there were.
Actually.
Four or five.
Any other recommendations? Anybody else recommending any firms?
I haven't sought recommendations from anyone else. Those were the four that she had recommended. So if you hear of any that you would like to send to Ronnie to forward on, great.
Uh, naturally, Ashley mentioned one of the firms that I knew, but I forgot the names. I don't know them personally. The, the firm that I was thinking of was on her list.
Okay.
I don't remember the name.
I'll send the list that I have to Ronnie. I don't know if you have it written down already, and then we can get it distributed, and that way everyone can kinda do their own homework.
Then we can vote next week on?
Potentially. We can just add it, I think we just add it as an agenda item, and if it sounds like we're all, you know, coming to a consensus on one together, then, yeah, we can vote to direct a point, and if we wanna do more homework, we can do that as well.
No, I didn't mean to go, keep going down the charter committee hole, but when I heard that they're meeting tomorrow with Ed Trumpke, I think we should ask him to wait if we're gonna hire someone next week.
I would agree with that. Can we, I mean, if we're, if we're potentially gonna direct.
Four hours to cancel it soon.
Okay. If we're gonna potentially direct a point next week, then I think that would be good, just for continuity to have one person guiding that conversation. So, let's go ahead and do that. Okay, any, we've got one more discussion. We got a couple presentations, so can we close?
About our.
Yeah, okay. Let's move on to item number five. We've got presentations today by LGPS and Prossman on, no?
Prossman.
Okay. What about LGPS? What happened here? Why? Have you spoken with them today?
That was LGPS with you?
Yeah. You haven't had any communication with them before, now?
I sent out emails to them last week.
Huh, okay. Um, I might reach out and find out what's going on there. Okay, so we have a, um, presentation by Prossman. It's 12:25. Um, Sonia, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for being here.
And can you see me or no?
I don't, can you see camera? It sounds like you might have your video off. Do you?
Oh, sorry, my video. There I am. Okay.
Yes, we can, you know, hi.
Yeah, there I am. Hello.
Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having me. Interesting conversation you guys have been having.
Lots of transitions happening, so, uh, we appreciate you being here. We just kinda wanted to learn more about your, your proposal for our, um, city manager recruitment needs.
Um, okay, yeah. Um, well, Problem Company's been around for 23 years. We've been doing this for quite some time. Um, probably 80% of our clients are Washington and Oregon, so we're very familiar with Oregon. I think right now, we have maybe eight or nine recruitments going on in Oregon. Um, and Steve, who I proposes to lead consultant, son lives in Bend, and he spends a lot of time in that area, so, um, he does, you know, 70% of the Oregon recruitments, and so he's very familiar with Oregon too. So, um, one of the advantages that us as a team that have been together for so long is we're, you know, we pretty much have our processes down. We work really well together. So you're getting, uh, you know, you get Steve, who's been doing this for over 12 years. I've been doing this for almost 20 years. Barry in my office, who handles the candidates and, and a lot, all the coordination with the city council and the city's been doing this for, he's been working at Problem for 20 years. So you get a pretty seasoned team. Um, and so for our recruitments, have you all seen the proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I don't wanna go over too much detail, but I, I think some of the things that, it's hard to represent in there is that, um, we don't just come in and say, this is how you have to do this. You know, we, we represented it in the proposal with certain steps, and there are certain steps that have to be done, but we really like to, uh, think of ourselves more as an extension of your HR team, not a, a firm coming in and, and putting this product in front of you that you have to use. So, um, it's hard to represent that in the proposal. Um, you know, that's when we come up at front, you know, we wanna learn exactly what you need and, and who you need to be included in, and we'll go over certain processes and, and explain why certain things are important, but we, we're here to work with you and adjust as needed. So that's hard to represent in the proposal, so I think that's important to know. Um, besides that, I think another important thing for a city manager search is that, um, having Steve, having done so many of these, it's his facilitation skills for facilitating the council and getting the, you know, the decisions. There's, there's quite a few processes throughout the, the recruitment window that usually lasts about three months, and can be less depending on how fast we need to go. But there's gonna be, you know, quite a few meetings with council that they need the facilitation, somebody who is experienced at it to get to consensus and explain everything and get the discussion going. Um, so that's a pretty valuable tool in, in Steve. Um, and so, um, you know, and I know you have two vacant seats. Are those going to be filled soon, or is that gonna be, uh, you know, until an election?
Yeah, no, we have, um, we will be filling one seat, um, at our regular council meeting on August 21st, and then the second one, um, sometime the first week of September. We haven't, um, solidified that date yet, so soon.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause one of the things that we do when we come in, uh, you know, we, we'll come in for a day or two, depending on how many people you want included in the upfront stakeholders, and the importance of the upfront stakeholders, number one is for Steve to understand exactly what the qualities and experience you need in this, um, new city manager, whether, you know, it's facilitation skills, whether, uh, you know, whatever it is, the, you know, one, two, three, four, five, he, he's gonna meet with the council, and then all the other stakeholders, you know, will meet with staff and hear what they, they think is important, um, you know, qual, personality wise, quality wise to, for the new person to succeed there. Um, but then there's, uh, the other stakeholders that the council needs buy-in from. You know, you want to bring them through the process a little bit and make sure that they have a voice in the process. So those might be business, school districts, you know, whatever, whoever in the area that, um, you know, works with your city manager that you want included, you know, we're there to also meet with them. And that's an important part of, um, the process too, is, is that upfront, um, and learning what you guys need.
Um, I have a couple questions. Does anybody else have questions? See, I'll go ahead and start, please. So I heard you say you guys are, you have eight or nine recruitments already in process. Um, how do you determine, working with so many cities and whatnot, if there are similar candidates? Like, how do you choose which, who to recommend to which city, I suppose? And do you recommend like multiple to multiple cities?
Meaning like when our candidates apply?
Yeah, like your pool of candidates. I suppose I, I, another question is, who are the pool of candidates? So if you had, you know, 10 of the same applicants, that you're like, oh, you, you could work for this, 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 and like, how do you choose which city to present those applicants to?
So when we put, when we post the position, we post it on our website, and, um, an applicant would come to our website, hit that particular city manager, city, King City, and, and then the position profile will show up, the, you know, they can click on the supplemental questions. If we have any other documents, sometimes, you know, we'll put a budget document on there. They can click on all these documents. Um, and so if they're specifically applying for your city, they hit apply now, and they, and so within our software, we have all the applicants just, that have applied just to your city, or to the other one, or to the other.
Potentially have ones that apply to our city and multiple other cities.
We do, we do sometimes, and, and what we do is, uh, you know, skill sets of what we know your council needs. We do, we do sometimes. And what we do is, you know, skill sets of what we know your council needs or worse. You know, if we know that somebody has better skill sets for one, we'll talk to them about it. You know, you're going to have a better chance, you know, of getting in the finals if you stay in this one. You know, it's, it's an evaluation process that we've learned over the years, how to manage and knowing by the skill level of the applicants. It doesn't happen a lot that we get the same applicants, but it will come down to where, where their expertise is. As you were talking about your next attorney, you know, they need, they need to know the charters and those kind of things. That kind of information's going to come out from our stakeholders and we're going to understand that with the candidates and be able to advise them. We don't want the candidates, you know, getting into a position that they're not going to be successful in either.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, thank you so much for being here and taking the time to put the proposal. I just wanted to ask a few clarifying questions. I know you're mentioning Steve as the person who may be facilitating the meetings. And Steve lives in Bend. Are we, is he going to be traveling to King City from Bend to facilitate? Are we doing this by Zoom? What is your normal practice on that, number one?
Actually, Steve is currently moving to Vancouver. So he's been living in Vancouver, selling his house up here in Washington so he can be closer. His son lives in Bend. So he's not that far from you from Vancouver. So he'd, he'd be driving in. So we can do Zooms or, you know, with city managers, we like to come on site and meet individually 30 minutes with each council member. We like to do the department directors in one meeting, any other, you know, what we would do is say, okay, you know, per our schedule, Steve can come in on this day and this day or just this day. And we'll have your HR or, you know, some help from the city to actually, you know, Steve will show up at eight. He's available to seven, you know, half an hour meetings. Can you please, you know, fill it up for us? And so, and if there's others that can't be there, we can Zoom with them too.
Second question, do you do background checks on the candidates to see if they've been involved in litigation in the past or anything like that?
Yeah, we do two steps. Before we do their first round of interviews, we Google, it's my staff Googles. We've been doing this for 10, 15 years now, at least 10 years. You know, we, we look at their application and any place they've worked, you know, we put certain code words in, right? Like the city to see, you know, we're, we're public, public officers, right? They're going to, if they've done anything, typically it's going to show up in the news. And so we do a really thorough Google search before we interview and see if anything comes up from all the cities they've worked in, cities they've lived, we tag it. So if something comes up, then we can ask, and it's, you know, we ask for controversies on their, on our application also. And so if there isn't any controversies on the application and yet our Google search shows it, then we can discuss it with them during their first round interview. We also, if we do have findings, we bring that forward. When we bring the packets and the information to you, you know, we'll, we'll show you any of the, those Googles or, you know, any, any warning signs. If they are warning signs and if we've discussed it with them in the interview, then we will be able to explain it to you. So that's the first part. The second part then is, once you get to your finalist candidates, we do do the background checks. We use a company called Sterling and they do the education, sex offender, all of those typical ones through those.
That's great. Thank you. Do you have any, do you make some best practices? You know, if we say we could use some best practices from your organization based on past history and what we're looking for going forward, would you be able to provide that or do you try to stay more neutral and just listen to the council and the community?
Best practices in what sense? I want to make sure I completely understand your question.
Best practices on like what we're looking for, what would be a good fit for what we're looking for, that kind of thing. And just some best practices on how the council can interact with the newly hired city manager, things like that.
Yeah. Yeah, we, you know, Steve has a lot of experience. So if there's things like that that you, you want help with, we don't like to, you know, in our position, we don't like to come in and write documents for the city, but we definitely, Steve, while he's talking to you, you know, he would get, you know, we, we have those types of things that we can share. Also, out of your stakeholders meetings, we'll get, you know, for the new manager, you know, to go into our position profile, we will have a lot of, you know, opportunities and challenges. We, we're going to have Steve's, from Steve's notes, we incorporate those into the position profile. You know, if you're building a new city hall, it's going to, you know, capital, you know, is, is, you know, background in capital, you know, building things is going to be important. So, you know, we incorporate a lot and learn a lot and put that into our position profile. And, you know, we're here to help and facilitate and guide you as much as you need because, you know, the candidates are going to be calling Steve and asking him, how is this council? I've read all these articles, right, that they've got two new ones or, you know, how are they solid? Do I move my family here, right? We've got to be able to look the candidates in the eye and say, you're solid, right? So, you know, they do call and want to know about the council. So any types of facilitation and, you know, he, we're there to help you too because we all want to be successful in this recruitment. And we want, we want you to find the perfect manager that's going to be able to move you forward and stay with you for a while. So.
How much work is delegated back to city staff?
You know, not too much. We, you know, we, when we do the position, so upfront, we're going to need city staff to help coordinate the stakeholders and, and, you know, get the schedule going. We, we ask city staff, we have a list of items we need that goes into the position profile, the salary range, the benefits, job description. So we'll be working pretty closely with someone from city staff on the position profile. Once we have a draft of that, I believe in Oregon, you guys typically, you have an executive session or in a council meeting, you approve the profile, I think. So it'll be coming to you in draft form without the pictures or anything to do review and edits of it. Then those come back, then we put it into like a final form and send it to you for final review and edits. And then I believe you, Oregon typically approves that position profile in, in a council session. So we'll be going back and forth with staff and council on that. And then, once the recruitment's open, there's not, there's, you know, a lot of activity on our end, not too much activity on your end. Because we're doing our emails, we're doing our direct mail, we're doing placing ads, we're doing our networking. So that, and then, and, and within city managers, most of them apply in the last week. So we can give you weekly updates and you're going to go, what? We've only got three applicants. But, you know, the last week or two weeks is when we get most of them. Most of them have jobs and don't want their council to find out they're applying. So it's pretty standard for them to do it the last day or two before the closing date. What's the closing date? We do screening, we do the interviewing, you know, we're pretty busy. Once we do the work session, we're going to need, we'll need staff to help us coordinate when the work session, when Steve will come and sit with you and go over all of the applicants and the ones he interviewed and facilitate the discussion of who you want to invite in for the final interviews. And then now at that point, setting up the, Steve will have a checklist to go over all the items that you might, you know, do you want to, for the final interview process, how you want to design it, who you want to include? And do you want to have panels? Do you want to have an evening reception? So we have a checklist for all of that that we'll go through. That, and then who, who do we coordinate? You know, we get a name again of who we will coordinate the final interviews with in your city. And that person, you know, it's setting up interview rooms, setting, are we having a lunch during the day? You know, how many panelists getting the invites? So it's a lot of coordinating at that point to get the final interviews going.
I have a quick question. Do you have any idea how large the pool of candidates you have right now?
The pool of candidates we have right now, you know, I can't tell you, you know, we, I can tell you, we just did the deputy county administrator for Kitsap County here in Washington, and we had 103 applications, which is pretty rare right now because the baby boomers aren't applying. And, you know, and so, and, you know, some, some we get six. We did the, we're going to go back out for Clackamas County Council, their county council position. We had six applicants, but they put us on like a two week, they wanted to, they were worried about some of their council commissioners vacation. So they put us on a very close, a very quick recruitment window. And then they weren't happy with it. So we've got two very good viable candidates, but they want more. So, you know, depending on the position and, and, you know, obviously the attorneys or the parks directors aren't for city managers. So we don't just run one big, long list of candidates. We have them within, you know, our application pools of, you know, of each recruitment we're doing. So we have over, I can tell you though, you know, for our website, we get over 7,000 hits from potential candidates looking at the jobs. So on our LinkedIn, you know, sometimes we do social media sharing. When we do fire, we ask people to share it on a fire chief one. We had 10,000 shares on, in a, in a week once. So, you know, our goal is to really get your, you know, the widest net possible between the advertising, between the direct mail, between the emails we send out, between our consultants networking, you know, they go to the conferences. They're still very active in ICMA. Our goal is that anybody that's qualified and to do the job as your city manager is going to know about your job. You know, so that is not just the- What's that?
What is your website address?
Sorry, I can't.
Yeah, you want your website address, and I was just going to ask you, you advertising more on, just on your website?
Oh, yeah. It's proffman.com. It's just www.proffman.com. And if you go under current recruitments, you'll see all of the recruitments we have and you'll be able to see the position profiles and all the things that I've been talking about.
You also put it on Indeed, other, other platforms besides-
You know, we don't do here, we typically don't use Indeed. What happens is it's kind of, it's, it's, it's a electronic process where they just throw a bunch of applicants at us, but, you know, tag words. And they don't, they don't actually apply through our application software. We just, our, our emails, you know, get loaded with, with names. And then we contact them and say, you know, hey, if you're interested in this position, you need to apply. And we don't get anybody that applies through that. City management is a pretty niche, you know, so we, we do the ICMA, we do AWC, we do League of Oregon Cities. We, we're pretty targeted in our outreach. If you want us to do Indeed, we will do Indeed. You know, we do have a pretty comprehensive list, list of places we advertise. We track our applicants on our application. We say, where'd you hear this job? We've never had anybody come in and say that they found it on Indeed. So, you know, we don't want to waste the money, the advertising money either. So.
It looks like your packet says that you posted on your Facebook and LinkedIn pages. Did you do that?
Yep, yep. And then we'll, we'll, Madison does our social media and she'll be contacting whoever from the city and ask you to share it on yours. Once we, once, once it's posted and we have the links, we'll ask you to share it. We'll ask you to share the Facebook, LinkedIn, and we get, and we do a LinkedIn boost also, which we tag certain people. So it'll put the job in front of city managers, right? It will, it'll tag, we pay for the boost and it pay, you know, you put in city manager, manager so that the, it makes sure that our posting will go in front of city managers.
We do need to wrap this up pretty quickly. We have a special session to go into if you have one last question.
Is there any way that we could get a Zoom introduction with Steve before we make our decision? Could we talk with him and just get a feel for his kind of persona before we make our decision?
Absolutely. We, we've done that quite often.
All right.
Very doable.
Thank you so much. Any further questions from the council? All right. Sonia, thank you so much for being here and answering our questions. We really appreciate it.
Okay, no problem. Thanks for having me.
Okay, so we've got about 13 minutes left to, do I need to adjourn the work session or can I just close it and move on? So at this point, we're going to close our work session and we will move on to King City's special session at 12:47. We'll call one more time.
I present.
Counselor Gerhart?
Here.
Counselor Tyso?
Here.
Counselor Arndy?
Here, and I'm here for half an hour, then I have to go.
And then Mayor?
Here.
Okay, we do have a couple of reports that we'll get to if there's anything. First is Police Chief's report. Do you have anything to share with us, Chief? Or the city manager's report. Do you have anything to share with us?
Our host continues.
Am I allowed to comment or not?
Is it related at all to his appointment as city manager?
We'll have to support.
We are also going to have a special session next week where there will probably be a more in-depth report. If we can wait till then. Okay. Staff reports, anything?
I'll also allow until next week.
Mayors and counselors reports. I don't have anything for today. Counselor Gerhart, any reports?
Yes, Jessica and I attended a meeting, is that yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah, with the staff and people from BRICS Construction and obviously ex parte.
Yeah, we had an ex parte meeting. Very briefly, we showed up yesterday to the construction meeting. We were really here more in our capacity as individuals and not in any of our capacities as city council members. And we were just trying to see, we weren't sure, kind of, we knew some people were coming down from the HOA and we wanted to kind of be the intermediary. So there wasn't any, we wanted to make sure that our staff was protected and not feeling like they were going to get these people coming in yelling and screaming. Not that they were, but just, we just didn't know like what the demeanor might be. So we just kind of came in as intermediaries and we just kind of stayed out of the fray. And I basically spent most of my time out in the hallway talking to the HOA about how they could use cheesecloth and things to hold the cheese back. And that was basically it.
We came away with a pretty good feeling that the staff and the people from BRICS, the supervisor, are going to do everything they can to mitigate the destruction of the arboretum. And then after that, Jessica and I met with Jenny Walker to tell her what the results were of that meeting. And she's very happy.
Yeah, and we did explain to her that there could be some casualties and we under, she understood that that could happen. And we explained to her why it could happen, that every effort would be made. And she seemed very happy with that.
And after we went out and did the site for her and the contractor got a better, closer look at the arboretum, and we also looked at kind of the ways that we could pull it back because there's a lot of room behind the hedge.
Yeah.
It seems, you know, because they kind of said that they could move around it without actually knowing the site. But then they were more encouraged after looking at it and saying like, yeah, this really shouldn't be that much of an issue.
And did I see you were going to volunteer to hold it?
Right there.
Jessica and I will also help you.
Yeah, we offered to help if we can be. We just wanted to make sure you guys could do your duty.
Thank you, guys. Counselor Tyso?
I have nothing at the moment.
At this point, we'll, we'll open up our open forum again to three minutes. If anybody, nobody in the audience, anybody online still that might want to speak to our agenda items for the special session? Other people? Okay. If anyone online would like to comment in our open forum, we will limit it to three minutes. Items, speaking items on the agenda or future items. Please raise your hand if you would like to make comments. Hearing none, we will go ahead and close our open forum. And item 13, unfinished business. There are a couple of motions that we need to make. This is really just tidying up the decision that the council made at our last session to appoint Chief Happala as interim city manager. There's some different words we need to use, so we're just going to, we've got two motions in front of us. The first, we need to appoint Chief Happala as- The first, we need to appoint Chief Happala as acting city manager, and then the second as city manager pro temp. So would one of the counselors like to make our first motion for acting city manager? Counselor Gerhart?
Sure. I move to designate Ernie Happala Chief of Police Acting City Manager pursuant to section 5.04A of the King City Charter.
Can I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, open for discussion. Anybody like to discuss? Hearing none, let's go ahead and take this to a vote. All in, well, can we do real quick? It should be real.
You can just, you can do voice votes. I'll write it down.
Okay, voice votes. Does that mean like aye and no? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five ayes. Okay, ayes have it. Welcome, acting city manager, Chief Happala. Okay, and the second is that we also need to vote to appoint Chief Happala as
I'll do that one.
Manager pro temp.
Appoint Ernie Happala Chief of Police Manager pro temp pursuant to section 5.04B of the King City Charter.
Oh, there's more. Have to read the rest of it.
This appointment will be effective as of Monday, August 11th, 2025, and shall not exceed six consecutive months from that date.
Can I hear a second? Open for discussion. Comments, questions? Hearing none, we will take it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, five ayes. Ayes have it. Motion passes. All right. That's good. Thank you, guys. All right, that is all that we have for today, so I move we adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, guys. 12:55. Yay! All right, thank you so much, Ronnie. I think that was really helpful.